Hello, everybody. We're going to get started with our city council meeting here shortly, but we have a couple of real quick proclamations to read, but I'd like our friends here from the Rotary Foundation to step up and kind of talk to us about what's been going on the last 100 years. Come on up, you guys.
Hello, I'm Sharon Vickery. I'm with the Rotary Club of Des Moines and also on the foundation.
Hello, I'm Todd Wheeler, and I'm also with the Rotary Club of Des Moines.
We are part of a committee with Rotary Foundation. It is celebrating 100 years of giving back to its communities, and the communities are local, state, national, and international. Some of the larger projects that you would be aware of on a global perspective is working to eradicate polio worldwide, and we are this close to doing that, and that's with our brethren of Rotary across the globe. On a local level, we do a lot of work with children, reading programs, housing, food and nutrition, food security programs, but you might have seen that beautiful park that's down by the Wells Fargo Arena, and that was a collaboration of about 10, 11 Rotary Clubs here in Des Moines put together some money, about $500,000, and built the park for you and your families.
And we just want to thank the City of Des Moines and the mayor for his support of our club and for declaring the proclamation today. So, thank you, mayor.
So, it's on the other side from Wells Fargo, and actually is by the Women of Achievement Bridge, and it really is a gorgeous park and a great addition, and so thanks to Rotary and all the work that you have done, and Sharon for a lot of the work that she did years ago with Downtown Des Moines Inc. and all the other stuff. So, it's interesting to see people as life goes on, how they keep doing great things for our city. And the Rotary Club, as was recognized here, was founded in February 23rd of 2005 in Chicago. It is an organization 1.2 million neighbors, friends, and community leaders who have come together with 35,000 clubs in more than 200 countries to create positive lasting change in local communities and around the world. And whereas it is open to people regardless of race, color, creed, religion, gender, or political preference, and whereas Rotary Foundation, founded in 1917, was established as an endowment for the people of doing good in the world through its many initiatives, including promoting peace and conflict resolution, fighting disease, providing clean water and sanitation, saving mothers and children, supporting education, and growing local economies, and whereas Rotary and the global health community have made amazing strides in fighting polio, funding the cost of immunizing 2.5 billion children in 122 countries, and they are close to eradicating polio. And whereas in Des Moines metro area, more than 1,100 Rotarians and 11 clubs are celebrating 100 years of Rotary Foundation and their contribution to our community and to the world, now therefore, I, the mayor, on behalf of our city council and all of our citizens, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 11th, 2017, as Rotary Foundation Day, and we encourage area residents to join in recognizing the Rotary Foundation for its 100 years of service and dedication to improving the human condition in local communities and around the world. Let's give them a big hand. Also, we have a proclamation for national service recognition. Are there any representatives here today? Come on up, you guys. All right, we're going to, before I read the proclamation, we're going to quickly talk about what's going on.
Tomorrow is Mayor's Recognition Day for national service across our country. The Corporation for National and Community Service administers all of our AmeriCorps programs, including Senior Corps and RSVP, AmeriCorps State and National, and our Vista members. We have three Vista members with us today who serve here locally in Des Moines. Mayors and city officials are more and more recognizing national service as a way to meet our community needs. So, thank you for having us.
All right, so our proclamation reads as follows: "The nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet our city's needs. And whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our communities, from educating students for jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families, to providing health services and helping communities recover from natural disasters. And where national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and education opportunities and abilities for those who strive and those who they serve. And whereas participants serve in more than 50,000 locations across the country, including Des Moines, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return of taxpayer dollars. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, City of Service, mayors across the country to recognize the impact of service on Mayor's Day of Recognition for the national service on April 4th, 2017. Now therefore, I, the mayor of the City of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim April 4th, 2017, as National Service Recognition Day, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city, and to thank all those who served, and to find ways to give back to their communities." So, let's give all these people a great big hand. We're going to take just a quick moment here. We have a couple items. Our Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board Agenda, and I will call that meeting to order now and ask the clerk to please take role of the board. Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Westergaard.
Here.
Hensley.
Here.
Gatto.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item two is approving the annual agency plan for fiscal year beginning July 1st of 2017 to include the 2017 capital improvement grant, and public housing admissions, and continued occupancy policy, the public housing lease agreement, occupancy rules, the Family Self-Sufficiency Action Plan, and the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Administrative Plan, Board Communication Number 17-327. And we had a great presentation this morning at our workshop, kind of going over a lot of the detail of this. If somebody could give us a motion, that would be grand.
I'll move.
It's been moved. Any discussion? Seeing none, would you like to have a...
That would probably be better on this.
All right. All right, that's the only item on our Municipal Housing Agency Board Agenda. If someone would please move to adjourn.
So, move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item passes. Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board sets adjourned. All right, prior to the start of our city council meeting, we are going to have a quick message from our own city council member, Linda Westergaard. Linda, would you like to have a stand, or would you like to have us remain seated?
No, remain seated, please. Heavenly Father, thank you for letting us gather here today. Thank you for our beautiful community and for all the citizens who work together on the many boards and commissions. As this city comes together today, we ask for your guidance, wisdom, and support. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion and allow us to nurture the bonds of community. Make our ears listen. Let our words be filled with grace and thoughtfulness, and may every decision we make be fair and just. We ask these in your name. Amen.
All right, we'll call our city council meeting for April 3rd to order, and I will ask the clerk to again take role.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
It's been moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item passes. Item three is approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are items three through 38, and generally, we enact those as one roll call without separate discussion unless someone either from the audience or one of our council members asks to have one pulled for further clarification or discussion. This evening, item 4K, Council Member Coleman votes no. Item 4P, Council Member Moore votes no. Item 4T and 4W, Council Member Gray wishes to speak. Item 6B, Council Member Gray wishes to speak. Item seven, Council Member Moore votes no. Item 26, Council Members Hensley and Moore wish to speak. Item 38C, Council Member Moore wishes to speak. Item 38F, Council Member Moore wishes to speak.
Mayor, I'd like to withdraw my request to speak on 38C and 38F.
All right, 38C and F have been withdrawn. Are there any other items that anyone in the audience would like to have polled for further discussion or clarification? These, again, are items three through 38 on today's agenda. Seeing none, could we have a motion for the balance?
Move.
Ask you all to vote.
Seven yes?
All right, that takes us now. Item 4T, and would you like to speak to these separately, Mr. Gray?
I'd like to hand both the same message.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Item four is approving alcoholic beverage license applications for the following. 4T is Peggy's Tavern at 3020 Forest Avenue, and W is Drake University, and I'm assuming this is probably around Drake Relays.
I see you have surmised that quite well, Mayor. Yes, at the end of this month, it's America's Classic, and we're going to have some of the greatest athletes in the entire world here. And Drake University has been putting this on for many years, and so this is going to be the first of announcement, because we'll have some more at the next council meeting, but it's great to have all the visitors come into Ward 1 in the City of Des Moines and see the greatest track event in the entire nation. So, I'd like to move both 4T and 4W.
I might add, it overflows into Ward 3.
All right.
A few weeks back, you referred to Peggy's as a sparkling jewel.
Yeah.
On April 28th and 29th, it will be.
I'll save that for next one.
Okay, we need to move each of those separately.
All right, first one I'll move is Peggy's at 4T.
Mr. Coleman.
Sorry.
Seven yes?
And next, I'd like to move Drake University, 4W.
All right, let's move on. Item 6B. Item six is under Public Improvements. It's ordering the construction of the following. And B is 30th Street sidewalk from Boston to Urbandale Avenue, and receiving of bids for 18 of 17, and it's setting the date of hearing of 5/8 of 17. Construction estimate is $200,000. Council Communication Number 17-337. I would also like to note that on the item before that, on A, there's some work going to be done on Locust reconstruction from 9th to 10th Street, and, Mr. Manager, we're going to have that closed for a period of time, right?
Yes, through August, early September.
So, it's going to be all the way through August through early September, about five weeks, Locust is going to be closed, and most specifically around 9th to 10th, right, or in that area?
Well, it actually goes all the way to 12th, because it's not a long block.
All right, so everybody, just mark your calendars. If you're driving around downtown, it's going to be a little circuitous during that timeframe.
There's a water main replacement.
All right.
Talkability.
Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a very important project for both Prospect Park neighbors and Beavertown neighbors. 30th Street, from the bottom of the hill at Urbandale to the top of Boston, has absolutely no sidewalks, a very narrow street, and it's compounded by the fact that we have students that are in the apartment buildings on 30th and Douglas. We have the VA at 30th and Douglas. We've got the Easter Seals up there in Boston and 30th. These are, you know, high-risk areas. People happen to walk in the middle of the street and take their wheelchairs in the middle of the street to try and navigate that. And so, I'd like to applaud Scott Sanders for taking the initiative on this. I've been begging for this for the last couple of years, but now we're going to get sidewalk along 30th Street so that we now don't have to have people walking in the street, presenting a danger to anybody up and driving down that street. It's a great addition. I thank you, Scott, very much for that, and I'd like to move 6B then.
All right, this takes us to item 26. Item 26 is approving the authorizing and distribution of a request for a proposal, RFP, for new construction of a single-family housing at 911 25th Street, Council Communication Number 17-317. Council Members Hensley and Moore, who would like to speak first?
Okay. This is a request for proposal. We're in the unique situation where the city has purchased the tax credits, and now we have a parcel of land, but as we were going through the process and getting ready to take action one way or the other, it was determined that there were some legal issues that needed to be addressed. And I know the recommendations and some of the correspondence that we've received have indicated we could go forward with an RFP and try to develop a single-family property there, but because you have the adjoining property owner that actually purchased it, paid cash for it, but did not record it properly, and has not paid property taxes on it since it was purchased, rather than immediately going out for an RFP, what I'd like to do is suggest that we give the property owner that had actually expended money originally a period of time to correct that, to cure it, so that we can then, and if he doesn't have it taken care of within, you know, I'm up for what we think would be a reasonable period of time, if it's 60 days, 90 days, but then at that point, we could move forward with an RFP. But I guess I think in fairness, we need to give that property owner some time, because he has been maintaining it. He's incorporated into his yard with a fence to make it like his, but I feel that there was also some responsibility on his part, their part, for not having done some due diligence to make sure that everything was taken care of. But it seems like this would be the most equitable way to deal with it, to give him some time and maybe arrange for financing if that's needed to deal with some of the back taxes. So, that would be what I'd like to do, and I know Skip has got some thoughts on that as well.
I totally agree with that, and if they'd bought that home through a mortgage, you've got a mortgage company that's doing, you know, that's doing all this for you. They may not have realized what they need to do. It can be confusing buying a leased property. I would ask, I believe Mary Niderbach had been dealing on this, and I would ask that if this passes, that staff contact them and say, "Here's what you need to do."
And what would be the time period? Are we thinking a 60-day time period? To be, I think 60 days would be more than adequate, and that'd give them time if they need to look at different financing mechanisms. And, you know, I would suggest that maybe they contact Neighborhood Finance Corporation. I mean, that it would be in a neighborhood that would qualify for Neighborhood Finance Corporation.
Okay, so the...
So, my motion would be not to go out for the RFP, but to give them 60 days to work with staff and cure the problem. And if they're not successful in doing that, but maybe they've made progress and they need a little more time, come back for, you know, another 30 days, but if they can't get it done at that point, then we'd go out for the RFP. And I think that would be one that would be fair.
Okay, so...
That's true, too.
All right, we have two choices. We could either continue this item for the 60 days with those directions, or we could vote it down and then have an alternative motion.
I guess I'd like to vote it down. We can bring it back if... Right. So, my motion will be to vote no on this... Deny this. Deny this RFP process. Okay, just for clarification, your motion would be to deny going out for the RFP? Correct. So, it would still be a yes vote to support that motion? Correct. Yes. By direct staff, as you described. Okay. You got it?
They're voting yes.
Voting yes.
Yes to deny.
We're voting yes.
Yes to support.
We'd like to confuse, get these double negatives up here.
Okay. Seven yes?
All right, so now we know exactly what we're doing from here.
We do?
All right, that completes the consent agenda, and now takes us to item 39, which is ordinances first consideration. 39 is amending Chapter 74 of the municipal code regarding mobile vendors to allow up to two mobile vendors or transient merchant vehicles to be located at Birdman Marina pursuant to the concession agreement, Council Communication Number 17-324. A is a final consideration. The ordinance above the waiver is requested by the Parks and Recreation Department and requires six votes. Anybody have a...
You'll move it?
I would, I would move that, yes.
Both, 39 and 39A.
39 and 39A.
You do? Next items for discussion, this particular one is under council request. This is from Council Members Gatto and Moore regarding support for the city of Des Moines labor force. A is a resolution regarding the support of the city of Des Moines labor force. And I will quickly read that request from our two council members, Gatto and Moore, regarding that particular resolution. Resolution reads as follows: Whereas the city of Des Moines, Iowa, goes on record as supporting our employees as well as collective bargaining units which represent employees; and whereas the city council of the city of Des Moines, Iowa, recognizes that the recently approved legislation makes dramatic changes to collective bargaining for public service employees in the state of Iowa; and whereas the city council of the city of Des Moines recognizes that these changes may hurt employee morale, may cause division among employees, and may lead to the loss of dedicated and conscientious public servants; and whereas the city council of the city of Des Moines values our employees and strongly believes that all benefit when employees have a voice in the workplace. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Des Moines, Iowa, that the city of Des Moines, Iowa, will continue to position itself as an employer of choice by continuing to treat employees in a manner which enables employees to have input when discussing legally permitted employment matters, employ fair compensation practices, and develop fair internal procedures for the handling of matters not otherwise assigned to the Civil Service Commission or other entity under the state or federal law. I'll turn it over to our council members, Mr. Gatto, Mr. Moore, any comment?
Sure. You know, this was sent to us a few weeks ago, and had our city legal take a look at this. Our city manager sent out an email to our, his staff, the entire staff. It was very supportive of all of them. But we felt that we need, as a council, to show our support for the folks that work for us. The folks that work for us make us successful. It's not just the council, mayor, it's everyone that works for us. And to make sure that we show you that, this is something little that we can do. We've had some dramatic changes, as it says in here. I think a lot of folks felt like they got kicked in the teeth, which probably did. I wanted to do this, show that we are behind you. At least I am. I'm one vote. So I'll turn it over to Council Member Moore.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm going to piggyback with what Joe said. We're not happy with, not all of us are happy with what happened up at the Golden Dome. And we appreciate the fact the city manager sent out his letter of support, but we feel as though you need more than that. You need to hear it from the council. We realize that it's our labor that makes us look good. They're the ones plowing the snow, they're picking up the garbage, they're putting out the fires. They're staying late on a Friday to sell dog and cat tags. We're not the ones doing that. You're the ones doing that. And I will guarantee you that this pendulum that has swung clear to the right eventually will swing back to the left. And we will be there for you, and hopefully up at the Golden Dome, they will reinstate your rights that you should have. But in the meantime, we're there for you, we're not turning our backs on you. And we'll work this out for the next few years, and we'll make it work for everybody. And with that, I'm going to move 40A.
Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo what Joe and Skip have said. One of the great things that, I was at the flood event earlier the last month, and I made the comment, how many nuisance calls did we get for not plowing the street or missing something? And to a person, everybody stuck up one of these and said, that's correct. I did not get a single complaint the entire snow season. Hats off to you guys. You know, you guys are the face of Des Moines going out there. You mean so much to all the work that gets done around here, the happiness of the citizens. And I can tell you, 44 years ago, back when Skip was still in diapers, I spent my summers coming back from college and riding on the rear end of a garbage truck through the streets and alleys of Des Moines. And I had no better experience, and it was nothing better than to see residents come out and, oh, I forgot this, I forgot this. Don't worry, we'll wait for you. These are the kind of things that you guys are doing now that really instill happiness and peace here in our city. So I can't thank you guys enough. We're going to be the back you always need. We're support you everywhere we go. And I just want to echo what these guys said. You guys do a great job, and I thank you very much.
Mr. Coleman. I feel like it's that situation where everything's been said, but not everybody's said it yet. So to Skip and Joe, who put this on our agenda, thank you. I think it's the right statement. To the city manager, who wrote it, something very similar in the hours after the legislation was passed, I want to commend you for that action and standing up for the people that work under your leadership, and we appreciate that. To all the people that work for the city, it's unfortunate the way the legislation came down, and you've always had our backs, and we'll have your back. I can promise you that.
Linda?
It's been well said, and I concur with everything that's been said. So thank you very much.
Christine?
I appreciate this very much, and thank you for putting it on. I think Mark Cooper was the one that originally sent us something, too, after we'd seen the email from the city manager. I support the employees completely. But I also think it's important that we've got to continue to work with the legislature and keep that in mind, because it does change. It goes, the pendulum goes back and forth. So we've got to figure out, how do we continue working with them, even though we're not always on the same page? So.
Again, I guess I'm the only one that hasn't said something, then most everything's been said. I will have to just add to that, that interestingly enough, last week, I went with two members of our city staff, and we were meeting with other leaders from around the country. We had about 70 cities that had individuals that showed up and talked about what works in cities. And one of the things and the messages that we brought was that organizations, and especially cities, they work best, obviously, we have some, we think, great leaders in our department heads, but it's from top to bottom. Good ideas don't just start at the top and go down. We look to you to help us resolve issues. You are our eyes and our ears out there every single day as we talk and try to work with our citizens to solve their issues, their problems, and meet their needs. And we can't do it alone. You can't do it alone. It's all of us working together. And I think everything that we can do to continue to foster our good relationships and good communication from all of our team, from the person that is out there every single morning, as was pointed out, as the snow comes down, or is out there when the floodwaters start coming, or is there for the fire, or the person that needs any public safety, or in a park, or in a library. We need to all work together and make sure we can do it. And I think it's that relationship that we have, and that open ear that we have to communicate your needs, and not only what you need day to day, but what you're thinking about, what you need, quite frankly, in your lives and for your family, and what's fair, and let's keep working together. And I am fully in support of this motion. So thanks to everybody for bringing it forward.
Mr. Mayor, I have a request of the manager, and that is, when this passes, that we place a copy on every employee bulletin board throughout the city.
Great idea.
Absolutely.
All right. It's been moved.
Seven yes?
We have one item left. Communication report is Richard Holman here. Richard, why don't you come up? Richard has made a request to speak. He's at 2747 Skies Drive. He wants to speak regarding the bird ordinance.
I have had birds living next to me since March, April. Actually, it was December of last year. The problems occurred March, April, when they went outside in the yard. They were within 25 feet from my house. I had trouble with animal control addressing the situation 25 feet from my house. Finally, I got a call back from Sergeant Butler, chewed my butt, told me the municipal code. That's when I found out, they just can't run that backyard, and they can't be in front yards, and that if there's smell, it needs to be addressed. If there's noise, that needs to be addressed. In the city codes, it states that no crowing, no squawking, and no gobbling. Squawking happens to be what a chicken does when it lays an egg, or fighting over the spot to lay an egg, happens quite a little bit with every egg. It's rather loud, like a crow. It's actually defined as a call. Next door to me, I have a rodent problem. That occurred in the fall, say November, it was a little late last year. I took pictures of the rodent holes. Didn't, nobody want to address it with animal control. Oh, that's just field mice, there's nothing I can do about it. I've lived there for 15 years at that place. I've had one mouse in my garage. That chicken coop is five feet from my garage, 25 foot, 1 inch from my kitchen, less than that from my outdoor patio, concrete patio, which we have burgers on and eat. I can smell these chickens. There's a duck pond, there was ducks there. We just haven't got, we failed to hit the mark with the chickens. I've got several pictures here of other places, which aren't at my place. One of them's a half a block from Mr. Moore's house. Chickens in the front yard at large, not fenced in, improperly contained in a steel shed next door to my house. I've kind of laughed a little bit about what's been going on with the city and the animal control, or lack of. The shed next to me, all summer last year, I never once complained about the heat issue, but never once did any animal control officer ever address it. There's one, after I made them put them in the shed, confined them away from, 25 feet away from my house, it continued on happening. You can't contain a bird in a four-foot fence. They have wings and they can fly. We need to address the chickens. The chickens need to leave the city. I've got several other pictures of several other residents, other than the one by Skip's house, with chickens in the front yard, or the hay and the straw out of the chicken coop dumped in the front yard. Actually, got ones at East 40th Court, or East 40th and Easton, living directly in the front yard, chicken coop right next to the house. The one by Mr. Moore, I'm absolutely positive, she's keeping those chickens inside her house in the walkout basement. This needs to be addressed. I've got pictures. I think pictures say a thousand words.
Do you have any that you would want to...
You're welcome, all of them. These are the ones by Mr. Moore's house.
Okay. Mr. Coleman, would you take those, and let's put those as part of the record here?
Make a motion and receive and file.
Yeah, that's just fine.
Push the file, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Mr. Holman, and I'm well aware of the one on East 28 that you're referring to.
East 28th and Douglas?
Yes.
With the duck pond?
And I believe they have roosters there.
Yes, they do. That's the noise ordinance.
They have roosters, and you don't need roosters to let it have chickens.
Correct. I've called with animal control, Karen Coker, the Monday after I took the pictures, the first beginning of the pictures, she said she was going to address the issues that the chickens were improperly contained, confined. I honestly believe that she's had these ducks and chickens in her yard and in her basement all winter. If they're in the tin shed, that's not adequate for the birds, and if they're in the cages next to the tin shed, that's not adequate either. I'd like to know why it's not, these complaints aren't being investigated.
I've, and I have worked on several in the neighborhood. I wasn't aware of any chickens by your home, but I am aware of them, and I know that I've talked to the manager. We're rewriting the zoning ordinance, and I have brought it up several times, that we need to address the chickens, because it is an issue, and we need, we do need to do something. So I'm aware of it, and I have been working on it, as I know others have. I know in our neighborhood, it is an issue.
When I said to Sergeant Butler, and my mother said, that we can't entertain on our outdoor patio, because we don't want flies landing on our food from less than 25 feet away, that should have been enough to get those birds removed from that property. I have had issues with, I said, the rodents. Food's still being stored in a wooden container outside the garage. It looks like a chicken coop. I've asked Sergeant Butler to take care of that issue. He don't want to look at it. Neither does Josh Culver. They both come out to my house. Never responded back with me about none of my complaints.
It's going to take an ordinance change.
Absolutely. Here's some pictures from around town. One of these is East 40th and Easton, in the front yard, fenced in. I think they're pretty clear. Some of them are up the street on Easton. One of them's directly across from the Get and Go on Madison and East 29th. We have birds right behind the cases at East 29th and Euclid, directly behind there.
All right. Can we have another motion?
Move to receive and file.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. All right. Thank you again.
These are all from the complaints and dated, which I called 2834811 and called. This is my protection, so I didn't have a missed call. I took pictures of the chickens running at large in the backyard, even after Chris, the animal control, made them put them in the caged area. I've had one ticket wrote in over a year.
Do you want, do you want to keep those yourself, or do you want to turn those in?
No. I've got all these copies on my phone. We can zoom them in and get a better picture if there's any questions.
All right.
Move to receive and file. And then can I just make one comment, too?
Yep. We have a motion. Receive my file, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you.
So it's not just on the east side, because I have a property. Maybe we just need to look at the policy. We're, we have chickens, we have llamas, we have all kinds of things going right in the middle of a neighborhood.
Why don't we make a motion to receive and file this information, but let's have a workshop on it or something?
I seen a goat get walked the other day. With a dog. With a pet.
We need to probably revisit the policy and the code that we've got, because, you know, I've got...
I would like some answers for why I can have a complaint. Animal control can come. I was number 13 with that Karen Coker's complaint. I was number 13. Within two hours, that Karen Coker, animal control, made it out to my house. Within two hours, 13 calls. Is she superwoman, or are these calls not getting answered?
All right. Thank you very much, Richard. And let's maybe have a motion, receive and file, all his comments.
I'll move to receive and file to the city manager. For, and then we'll do a workshop.
We'll do a report on his complaints.
Maybe we can change...
Thanks for coming in. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Motion's been made.
A lot of talking about birds. I heard this stuff.
Seven yes?
All right. Item 41 is our first hearing item. Let's note that the hearings are beginning at 5:09. Item 41 is on the vacation conveyance of the north-south alley right of Way, located north of Laurel Street and south of Ascension Street, between 6th Avenue and 7th Street to Catholic Health Initiatives Iowa Corp., doing business as Mercy Medical Center, Des Moines, $40,760. Council Communication number 17-331. A is the first consideration of this ordinance, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above the waiver is requested by Mercy Medical Center and requires six votes. Anybody here to speak on this? Looks like we have a one or two speakers.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Swanson. I represent Mercy Medical Center. I'm part of the team that's overseeing our campus master plan efforts. This request is before you tonight really is a complement or continuation of the amendment that you approved last fall for our PUD. This vacation and conveyance of the alley will just allow us to fill out some parking on a land that we own next to the alley. I'm very happy to say that the adjacent property owner, Flat Top Holdings... adjacent property owner, Flat Top Holdings, completely supportive, fully supportive of the full, the conveyance in entirety of the alley to Mercy. With me tonight is Pat Dunn from RDG Planning Design. We're happy to answer any questions that you have about the request, but absent that, would just ask that, ask for your approval, and also for your approval to waive the additional readings. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here.
I'll ask, is there anyone else here to speak, maybe opposed to this? All right. Christine?
I will move item 41 and 41A and B.
All right.
41A and B have all been moved?
Implore the buildings.
Yep.
Just for fun?
People like that.
People love it. It sits in a great spot where you'd have lots of good views, too.
There's still a lot of long-term crane to watch for little kids.
Okay, very good.
Sandy, I sold 100 tickets.
It shows the scope now that those buildings are coming down, and that's going to be a really good facility for thousands of Des Moines people.
Absolutely. We appreciate your support.
Sandy, I sold 100 tickets now that I have to refund, so.
I'm very sorry.
Need better coordination.
We'll try in the future.
7:00, you got your wish.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Item 42 is on a request from roll-offs of Des Moines to rezone property in the vicinity of 20 East 18th Street, from limited M2 heavy industrial to amend limited M2 heavy industrial to allow the expansion of permitted uses from outdoor storage of inoperable machinery, to include outdoor storage and sorting of recycled waste materials within roll-off containers, and dismantling of vehicles and machinery, subject to conditions. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the applicant, and it requires six votes. Anybody here to speak on this item, 41, regarding roll-offs in the vicinity of 20 East 18th?
I think the applicants here, Mr. Mayor, I think this has been a long process. And I know Sue Ann's not here, but I've had some discussion with her. And I know this is just the start of the process to get it where we need to go. And he's shaking his head at me. So I, I know that your site needs some tender love and care, and hopefully this is the start of it. I will, I will support this motion, granted that we continue to the path that we need to get, that you're working with city staff, and I know they're doing a good job, and you're agreeable upon that. So I will move 42A and B, waive the final consideration, so you can get going on the next process.
All right. 41, this is regarding 1210 Army Post Road. A is to amend the existing Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow plan, future land use designation from community mixed use and low-density residential within a community node to industrial within a community node. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends denial. B is hearing on a request from Tiger Knight LLC to rezone 1210 Army Post Road from C2, general retail, highway-oriented commercial, to limited M1 light industrial, to allow the reuse of the building for warehouse and bowling pin refurbishing. We need to select either one or two. A is to deny that request, or B to continue this until April 17th of 2017 at 5:00 p.m. and direct the legal department to prepare the necessary legislation to approve. And this will require six votes to get a pass on that request from the legal department. Yes?
Mayor, members of the council, my name's Ed Arf. I'm with Civil Engineering Consultants, representing Tiger Knight. And Barry Nelson, owner of Tiger Knight's here also. This basically is a request to take an existing vacant building and try to get a use going in it that actually can utilize the facility. You may all know, this used to be a printing press area. There's electrical servicing. The configuration of the building works that such. Barry would like to have an ice facility, ice distribution facility out of this building. It lends itself to that. We, as you can, as you know from the report, P&amp;Z wasn't really in favor of it. The surrounding neighbors, we had a neighborhood meeting. None came to the meeting. We did have a neighborhood meeting with the association to the north. They, very well-attended meeting, very good discussion. The letter they wrote to us was, we'll leave it up to the experts, which I believe is you all. We did have a couple letters from other neighborhoods farther to the east. And I think the main concern was, we originally started out with an auto-repair concept as part of this facility, and we have long since let that go. It's really more for the ice distribution is what we would really like. And Mr. Nelson is moving his business to this building, and would have an office here also. I think the big concern with the neighborhood associations was the streetscape, pedestrian friendliness. We're all for that, too. We think by cleaning up the site, getting it up to speed as far as site planning, getting the landscaping and the setbacks all in order, that we will contribute to that future plan. I might let Mr. Nelson also then explain his vision for the property.
My name is Barry Nelson. I live at 13947 Oakbrook Drive in Urbendale. I'm getting into commercial real estate. I've been in residential real estate for over 20 years. Just several points with this building. I have a good relationship with Arctic Glacier Management in the Des Moines area. Currently, they reside in Aurora, and that facility's not big enough. This building lends itself to that, and lets me have an office for my equipment and different things I do. The bowling pin repair, I have a company that's in northeast Iowa, and it's possible I would want to move it to the Des Moines area in the next five to 10 years, but I'm willing to give up on that one if that's a problem. That's all contained inside the building. So this is a large building with high ceilings. I'm willing to put some money into the outside. I talked to Christine and Joe a bit, because I believe this building is kind of in their area. And I talked to you both about putting some money into the outside of the building and sprucing it up according to a plan that I would have Ed's company draw up. So with the high ceilings, it lends itself to some industrial uses, as opposed to just some storefronts, which if this doesn't pass today, I will probably go that route. But I would love to land Arctic Glacier Ice for their new facility. They landed the Casey's account, and they need room for 1,500 pallets of ice. And there's only one option here in Des Moines, which is Des Moines cold storage. So they have no other options for cold storage in Des Moines.
Do you have an agreement signed with them?
No. I can't really go after them unless I get a facility that I can compete with Des Moines cold storage. So I would renovate this building and turn it into 9,000 square feet of frozen space.
But what happens if you don't? What happens if they've already gone another direction by the time you renovate it? Then we've changed the zoning for a use that we might not know who's going to be there, and now we've got an industrial use there?
I'm willing to restrict just about anything, except maybe the ice distribution, if that's what you want.
I don't think we can. I don't think that that's, I don't know. We'll have to.
So.
I didn't mean to interrupt you. I apologize.
That's okay.
It happens sometimes when I drink Red Bull.
Well, I don't have any chickens or anything, so.
Okay. That's good.
The neighborhood associations were mostly against like an auto-body shop. I've had interest from two or three people already for auto-body, and I understand that. I'm okay with not having that. It is on a truck route, and so to have the trucks delivering ice out of here, I think is, it fits very well. Two properties to the west of this building, at the end of 2015, the zoning was changed from C2 to M1 with some restrictions. So I'm asking for something very similar to what that property did at the end of 2015. And then, I've already mentioned the bowling pin thing. This building would hold my business easy in half of it, but I don't need to have that. My main goal is to get, get the rights to be a warehouse and distribution for ice. And other than that, I'll just have to go to another direction. But Arctic Glacier really would like some competition. And this building lends itself and would make a great spot on the south side to distribute ice from. I'll answer any questions if you have any.
You know, thank you very much, Barry, for this. And you talk about the fact that the, there are a couple of other properties a couple of years ago, but we've changed. We're going through a zoning change. We've got a new plan. And as I read through the minutes, and when they denied it at P&amp;Z, my concern is, you did talk about the bowling pin, you've talked about the ice, and you've talked about cars. So there's really some confusion and concern about really what's going to end up in there. And I talked to staff about it today, too. So I'm not comfortable going forward with the, or I'm supportive of the recommendation to deny. And, you know, I don't want to be negative about you recruiting a company to come here. Obviously, we'd want to work with you, and maybe there are some other options and ways that we could be of assistance to you. But based upon the other improvements and what's happening along Army Post, I'm just not comfortable with this right now. That's just me.
Okay. Yeah, I read through the minutes also, and I know that there's concern. I mean, you've got some significant redevelopment on Army Post Road with the Ramada Inn, you know, five to six million dollar remodeling there. You have the new Casey's being built across the street. The Dairy Cream's going to build a new building. Do we, do you need it changed if it was, if it was the ice? I mean, I don't, I don't.
What I've been told is.
Would you need the zoning changed for that?
What I've been told is, I can be a warehouse, but I can't be a distribution.
Okay.
And so, I mean, it's not heavy distribution. The trucks load once, twice a day and are gone. They've got six or eight trucks. So it's not like.
When we, we did, we did rezone another property, but they also had a plan of what they were going to do with the building, and, you know, and I know that they've, they've not parked their trailers in there. I mean, they're having significant problems there that, you know, that they, they're not able to do some of the things there. But they also fixed up the building. They need to do some more work on it. But they came to us with a plan. I mean, you don't have a landscaping plan. You, I mean, you're telling us, hey, you rezone this, and then I'm going to do X, Y, and Z. I mean, that's.
Can't they be contingent upon each other?
No, I don't, I don't believe so. I can ask Mr. Lester. I think the zoning goes, and it can be, if we change it to M1, they get to do whatever M1 gets to be.
If the rezoning is done with no conditions, then, then yes. And then, but the conditions, my understanding, were not before the P&amp;Z, so.
Could we have him continue, and then?
Well, I guess, I'm just not hearing a lot of support for it from neighborhood associations, P&amp;Z. My thought would be that we deny it here tonight, and that would give you the ability, then, if you still want to pursue this, and you can be more specific, that you take it to the Board of Adjustment and ask for a variance.
And staff has mentioned that to us, so we're aware of that. We just thought we'd finish this process out to the best of our ability. We feel we'll contribute to the street, as everyone else is. It's just that the one hang-up is the distribution. And to really limit it, the M1 to specifically that use, we understand. It changes the classification on the zoning map, so.
Well, and I would have a plan of what the building's going to look like if you go to the, just my suggestion. I mean, it would be good to see some renderings of what you plan on doing.
We did look at a preliminary layout and know that it would work with staff, but we understand your concern.
I'd be supportive of the denying.
So I'll move item 43, 43A to deny, and B1 to deny request. And that will then give you the ability to go to Board of Adjustment.
Right.
Okay. And if we can be of assistance in helping you.
Yeah.
Attract and retain that, please let us know and work with the staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 44 is regarding 623 East 12th Street. A is to amend the existing Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow plan, future land use designation from public, semi-public to neighborhood mixed use. B is a hearing to rezone from CO, commercial residential, to C1, neighborhood retail commercial, to allow the conversion of a former medical office building to a drive-up financial institution, subject to conditions. C is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and D is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the applicant, and again, requires six votes. Looks like we have a speaker.
Good evening. My name is Bob. My name is Bob Zandi with the Kirk Gross Company. We are representing the Caperview Credit Union.
Bob, again, your last name?
Zandi.
Okay.
Z-A-N-D-I.
Thank you.
Caperview Credit Union is in the process of purchasing this building to convert it to their new credit union location. It is currently a small, outdated medical facility. This will be very beneficial, I think, to this corner, in that we are working with both the traffic department and the city with making improvements that they've requested as far as bringing utilities underground to the building, getting them from being overhead across 12th Street, cleaning up some of the parking along the street. It has had very many moving parts, that we are making the adjacent property more usable for the state, in that we are working a land swap with them to acquire some of their property versus giving up some bars, so it makes their property a little bit more usable. The state has been in support of this, and we have a representative from the state here that could speak to that. Also working with the DOT, allowing access out onto Lion Street, which was abandoned, in some agreement with the DOT. So they have granted us that, to get access out to East 12th Street. So the planning and zoning has been in favor of it. I don't think there has been any objections to this being rezoned as requested. This project will be bid out, will be bid out to all local contractors to do the work on it. So we think it's a plus all the way around.
Awesome.
All right. Let's see if we have any questions.
I don't have any questions, Bob. Thank you for your presentation. I think it'll be in an added edition. I will move 44A, B, C, and D.
Bless you.
Item 45, on the 20th Amendment to the Metro Center Urban Renewal Plan.
We are done. We don't have to come back when you prove.
Nope.
You're all done.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Okay. So Council Communication number 17-325. Anybody here to speak to that? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
I'll move 45.
Been moved? Any discussion?
Seven yes?
46, on the 8th Amendment to the Southeast Agribusiness Urban Renewal Plan, Council Communication number 17-326. Anybody here to discuss this item?
I'll move 46.
Seven yes?
All right. Item 47. Item 47 are items regarding the sale of property at 422 Walnut Street, containing the 5th and Walnut parking garage for private redevelopment. Council Communication number 17-346. A is a communication from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding the vacation of alleys in and adjoining 422 Walnut Street. B is closing the hearing on the vacation of portions of the east-west alleys lying within 400, within 422 Walnut Street, and approving the same. C is the first consideration of the ordinance, vacating portions of the east-west alley lying within 422 Walnut Street, and one is the final consideration of that ordinance. The waiver is requested by the legal department, and six affirmative votes required for the passage of that. D, closing the hearing. D, closing the hearing on the vacation of the west six point five feet of the north-south alley lying east of land adjoining 422 Walnut Street, and approving the same. E is the first consideration of the ordinance above, one under that is the final consideration of that ordinance above, the waivers requested by, again, by the legal department, and six affirmative votes are required for passage. Should we work on those to begin with, Mr. Attorney, or...
Sure, that would be fine.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak? Item forty-seven, A through E, E1. There are none, could we have a motion on those?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So are we going to go through and do the first part, do these first, and then we're going to come back and go through the rest of these? So we'll do G and H, is that the plan?
Yes.
Yep.
I'll move, then, the forty-seven, A, B, C, C1, D, E, and E1 regarding the vacation of the alleys within the property.
Seven, yes?
Okay, the next selection is select item F or items G and H below. F is a resolution closing the hearing and approving the Urban Renewal Development Agreement for the sale of land for private redevelopment with Blackbird Investment LLC for the sale and redevelopment of Fifth and Walnut Parking Garage at 422 Walnut Street, or G, resolution extending the three-year deadline under the Skywalk Ordinance for the replacement of the Skywalk Corridor for the Fifth and Walnut Parking Garage until August nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-eight, and a resolution closing the hearing and approving the Urban Renewal Development Agreement for sale of land for private redevelopment with Fifth and Walnut Parking LLC for the sale and redevelopment of Fifth and Walnut Parking Garage at 422 Walnut Street.
Mr. Mayor?
Again, we'll, Ms. Hensley?
What I'd like to do is just make a couple comments here, because then I think that there are other council members that would like to add to it as well.
Well, is there an official notice on F?
Yes, actually, first, if I could...
We have official notice on F, so...
So later this, later, late this afternoon, we did receive official word that the Blackbird Investments LLC was going to withdraw their, and they did withdraw their proposal.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple comments here, and I know that others want to make comments, and I do plan, I've got some, a motion here that I will read into the record for G and H, but just for public information, since the presentations a week ago Friday, I can't tell you how many hours everybody has spent having discussions regarding and looking at the two proposals and trying to figure out what did, how did they measure up and how did they compare. And I think in the long run that that's been extremely positive, because you ultimately end up with a better project, forcing that dialogue and that discussion. And I'll share with you one comment, our former city manager, Rick Clark, who left a few years ago, and he's now in Cleveland, but he continues to come back to Des Moines on a regular basis, he has family here still. One comment that he makes to me every time he comes back into town is, he says, Chris, you have absolutely no idea how fortunate Des Moines is to have the level and quality of developers that we have in this community. And I think the process and the experience that we've gone through just recently, it was a competitive process, we are required by law to do what, what we did. I'm sure that the Mandelbombs weren't really excited about it, and it caused us to be in a constant, just in a real state of, oh my gosh, how do we handle this? Because I don't remember this ever happening where it came in at the eleventh hour like that. But I can honestly sit here and say tonight, and I know I called staff when I was at a point where I said, I feel good, I feel good about this. And I feel good about it because we have staff, we have developers, we have colleagues up here that have all worked to get us to where we're at. So I'm going to stop right there, and I'll read a motion, and then I know that we have other people that would really like to make some comments. You want me to read the whole thing?
Well, we can just have a discussion, and then you can read it.
Okay, if you want to go ahead.
Want me to go, Chris?
Sure.
It would probably, you, you can either make reference to the motion and, and move G and H as amended in the motion, or you can actually read it out loud.
I think we need to read it out loud, because there have been some changes there that I just want to make sure everybody is familiar with.
Sure, that's fine.
But I'll let these guys go ahead.
Well, first of all, I just want to thank our city staff, the Mandelbombs, and Blackbird. So, the thirty-day process, I know probably Justin and the Mandelbombs probably didn't like it, I know Blackbird probably didn't like it at, towards the end, but it did work. It worked for the taxpayers in the, in the city of Des Moines to get the best possible project that we can build down there, with some good timelines that, that I think we can all live with up here. You're right, we've all worked countless hours on this project, including yourself. But, you know, to the Blackbirds that, that withdrew their bid, you know, hats off to them, you know what, they pushed us, and they pushed the Mandelbombs to, to, to making sure that we had a good project, and the best that we can produce, and okay as a council, using taxpayer dollars, and, you know, they, they should be applauded for that. I'll, I'll stop and give you, let you do some other comments, and then we can read in some of the timeline, and hopefully that we're all on the same page with some of those. The timeline is, was my biggest thing, twenty twenty-eight, having the Skywalk closed, not having anything there was, was a big issue, and, and I'm glad that we, we addressed it. You know, constructing the garage shall be completed by October thirty-first of two thousand and nineteen is, is a timeline that I think we can all live with. Having the Skywalk open by September first of two thousand and twenty-two, having, you know, footings in the ground by October of two thousand and nineteen for the tower and for the theater portion of it.
And then I'll, I'll let you talk about some of the incentives and, and the, the other portion of it.
I don't think I speak any differently than anybody else, I, I very much value our city staff, our, our legal team, especially on projects like this. Roger, thank you. A lot was made about the Dualing Tower deal, and about a week ago, I started saying to myself, you know, there's a third option, and, and it's, it's neither one, and, you know, we, we should take a hard look at it. The proposal that we had come in from Blackbird, the second proposal, did exactly what Christine and Joe and the mayor and everybody else has said, it, it, it required us to sharpen our pencil on both of them, and to ensure that we had the very best proposal going forward. That's what competition and the marketplace should do for the, for the, the people, the consumers that benefit from that. And in this case, the consumers, the, those that benefit are the citizens of Des Moines. I, I was like a number of people up here, that when given the chance to take a look back on the deal we struck with Mandelbaum's proposal a couple of months ago, I had what I've referred to, to my colleagues, as a little buyer's remorse. I thought the horizon of ten years to be able to have that property encumbered, the, the end pieces of that block was inappropriate, and that we hadn't fought hard enough for the citizens of Des Moines on that. I thought it was fixable, too, and for that reason, I compliment Justin Mandelbaum and his family for the work that they went through to sharpen their pencils and to address that issue. The motion that Christine is going to submit addresses that, it moves the, the latest possible time from two thousand and twenty-eight to two thousand and nineteen, and that is a huge deal for the citizens of Des Moines, and it, it tilts the leverage back to the city in a couple of years if progress isn't going to be made. We no longer can't engage on that until two thousand and twenty-eight, we can as soon as the last quarter of two thousand and nineteen. Again, as others have said, that wouldn't have happened without Blackbird, they had elements of their proposal that were really, really compelling, their aggressive timeline was important, their commitment to the, the workers on the building and on the project, and Mayor, in a little bit, maybe we can come back and I could ask some questions of the developer and the contractor, those, those were, those were really positive. I thought some of the elements of Blackbird were positive in, with regard to the option of a hotel on Court Avenue, and you're going to hear Ms. Hensley read a, a motion that, that addresses options, not preferences, but options on the hotel, whether it stays in the tower or could maybe someday move somewhere else. I, I feel as if this project is at the best place it's been since the first time we spoke of it, in terms of its ability to be executed. But as Justin will remember, I, I've said every time, we always want to be under-promising and over-delivering, and you've proven to me, Justin, that each, each phase of this, you've gone back and done what was necessary to prove to us that you could carry this to the finish line. The proof will come later, but you have my confidence, and I think our confidence, and I appreciate you respecting the competition that was in front of you, and making your project better for the taxpayers that we represent.
Do you want me to go ahead and read in?
Well, no, we got to, I think, let the rest of the council speak, Phil, first?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I, I want to tell you, I do want to thank staff, you guys have put countless hours in on this, this is a pretty important decision, and it wasn't made very easily. And I want to thank Justin for the many meetings, and I hope you remember, every time I leave, I, I leave it with a smile on my face, it's good seeing one on yours. I have never seen the amount of emails, phone calls that I have received over this, over a development. That shows that the citizens of Des Moines are extremely concerned about making a move in the right direction. To put it in perspective, this will be, hopefully, a one-hundred-year building and plus. What does that mean to us? That means our kids are going to be watching that thing, our grandkids, our great-grandkids, and possibly our great-great-grandkids are going to look up at that thing and say, hey, I remember my great-great-grandpa or great-great-grandma voted this thing and think it's a great thing for the city of Des Moines. And I think it is, it's going to be a hallmark for downtown Des Moines, so I won't repeat what everybody else said, because the accolades are going to keep coming, but you've done a great job, Justin, you've met some tight timelines, and put a smile on my face as always, so thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo what everybody else said about staff, I really appreciate what you've been through for the last two years, and we're finally getting to the point where it looks like we're going to start the demolition. I want to talk to Justin, because you are now, with the withdrawal of Blackbird, you're Fifth and Walnut, and everybody knows it. You've had a huge amount of support out there, I hope you realize that. It's up to you now to make everybody proud that was supporting you. The only other thing I'm going to point out is sustainability, and I've had calls from people wanting to know who had the most sustainable project, and I really didn't know, but I'm really hoping you're going to incorporate green into your entire building on this, but thank you for coming forward, we need some younger people doing this kind of work, and appreciate you a lot, thanks.
Linda?
I just echo again what everyone else has said, I know that everybody's worked really hard, I think both projects were very good, I'm glad that we are where we are, and congratulations, now let's get building.
Christine?
Okay, here's the motion that, and we tried to capture everything, and Justin, we're going to want you to come up, and I think there are a couple more questions for you, but we'll get this on the table here, and just want to make sure you agree with everything that's in the motion. This would be to move Agenda Item G regarding the three-year deadline for reconstruction of the Skywalk Corridor with the amendment that the extension is only for an additional two years until September first of two thousand and twenty-two, with any extension to be subject to further approval by the city council, which is important. Then move to pass Agenda Item H, approving the agreement with Fifth and Walnut Parking LLC represented by Justin Mandelbaum, subject to the agreement being first amended by April twelve, two thousand and seventeen, to incorporate a number of changes, and with the final agreement to be subject to approval by the city manager and the legal department to confirm that these changes have been appropriately incorporated into the agreement, and these changes are as follows. Construction of the garage shall be completed by October thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Construction must be commenced on the proposed theater building or a hundred and fifty-room hotel on the southern parcel by October thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. If the south parcel is developed with a hotel, then the assistance of, assistance for the hotel shall be limited to ninety percent of project TIF, and the developer must pay one million dollars to the city in partial repayment of the four million dollar forgivable economic development loan. Next, construction must be commenced on the residential building on the northern parcel by October thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. If a hotel is constructed on Court Avenue, then the residential building on Walnut Street can be devoted entirely to apartments. If a hotel is not constructed on Court Avenue frontage, then the residential building on Walnut Street shall contain a hotel with at least eighty-four lodging rooms. Other amendments negotiated by the city manager and consistent with the principal terms of the agreement is summarized in the roll call and the first five amendments. So we don't want to see you back here, if you agree to this, because the rest of it will be with city staff, city manager, economic development. If you're back here, it means that something's not going right.
Mayor, if I, if I could, Justin, do you mind answering a couple questions? First, congratulations, answered these questions well. A couple things that are too complicated, I think, for an amendment here, but I wanted to have some discussion, and just get some comments on the record. One of them is just about the design standards of the, of the project.
Sure.
You've, you've presented some drawings and some, some concepts, including an exit move to in front of Mulberry on the west side of the building for the parking garage. Can you speak to your commitment to stay in, in conformity with those drawings and the, the, the plan that was presented at the Urban Design Review Board?
Sure, absolutely, and first, I'd like to thank staff for all the work that they've done over the last two years. I'm sure they've put more work into this project than any project in front of them. We felt that it's been a very collaborative process, and everyone is better off because of that, so I thank you all for your devotion to that. And would also like to thank city council for all the time that each and every one of you have put into this project, throughout this process, and especially over the last couple weeks, it really shows your dedication to the city. To answer your question specifically, you know, we did a, a national RFP on architects for this project, as you know, and ended up going with a firm out of Chicago called SCB Architects, and while we try to keep everything local that we possibly can, as evidenced by our contractor selection with Whites, you know, the most important thing to us is making sure we deliver a project that can get done. And SCB is a leading architect of high-rises in the Midwest, who's designed over a hundred that have been built. The renderings that we presented to Urban Design Review Board were their first draft of renderings, we were basically rushing to show the city that we're not designing a white box, but a building that everyone can be proud of, and I would say that that is a clear expression of our design intent for the project, and we plan to hold ourselves to those standards.
Excellent.
Thank you. The, the, the motion includes changes in some timeframes, and those are all things that you, you are aware of, I think, and you, you, you think your team can execute on those.
Yes, we, we agree to those timeframes, and in fact, in working with Whites, we are certainly planning on beating those timeframes, and so hopefully, we won't need to go as long as what those timeframes allow us to.
Two, two other things, you and I have talked about the hotel and the theater, and I know it's your desire that the community still knows that your priority is the theater. Do you want to just speak to that, because I don't want that to get lost in the show? Because I don't want that to get lost in the shuffle of a bigger hotel.
Yes, it, it, it appears to me that the motion allows us the option to put a hotel on Court Avenue instead of a theater. I am here to tell you today that the theater has always been the driving force of this project. And we fully intend to put a theater on Court Avenue. We believe that the hotel belongs on Walnut Street, which will help the revitalization of what the city's trying to accomplish there as well.
I might, if I could, I just would add, based upon the feedback I'm getting from citizens all over, the theater is the number one driver.
Absolutely. You know, the, the theater is likely to have 500,000 ticket sales a year. It's a big, big driver for downtown. It's a big driver for Court Avenue. And it affects a lot of the citizens in this city, frankly, much more than the tower.
The, the, the last issue that I have, and manager, it might even be something that at the end of this, we could just add a, a addendum to the motion to refer it to you. But there's, there's been some talk about the workforce on the project and how to define good quality. I know that our friends from White's are here and maybe, maybe they'd respond to this as well. I'm not quite sure, before 36 hours ago, I could have articulated the difference between a job made with union construction workers, people pulled out of the skilled trades versus what impact there would be for prevailing wages and what those differences are. I think to most people like me, it's kind of a difference, a distinction without a difference. But, but could you and maybe White's just talk about the caliber of employees that are going to be on this and where they're going to come from?
Sure. And I'd, I'd be happy to, to let White's speak about that. Big picture from our perspective, you know, we did a detailed RFP for general contractors as well. And we selected White's for a number of reasons, but one of them is their commitment to local labor, their use of, of union. That's been a hallmark of our company for, since the, the beginning. And we think that this will be a great project for the labor force here in town.
Good evening. Mike Towesley with the White's Company. Thank you for your support for Justin and his family. This project means a, a great deal for us as well. And specifically to the question regarding labor force, you know, I would say from our initial commitment with Justin, our approach to the labor force has not changed one bit. We intend to provide jobs to local individuals, high-quality jobs predominantly supported by the union trades here in, in Des Moines. And that's been our commitment since day one and it's our commitment we make on every single project we do here in central Iowa.
So, I, I assume that that, because the other one talked about Davis Bacon wage, obviously that's, that's what you do, correct?
Yeah. And, you know, some of the union people here can probably speak to this better than I, but it's, it's my understanding that the Davis Bacon wages are established basically from the union wage rates.
Right.
So, it's essentially the same.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I, I just, Christine, if you wouldn't mind, I, I think one of the interesting backdrops of this conversation was the focus in on the workforce and that both teams came forward with this. And I think both teams would say that should be something that we're really thinking about. Skip puts that issue in front of us a lot. And I'm not quite sure what the right rules are, but when we have hefty, expensive TIF allocations to project, I, I, I would think that it's worth us considering a policy as to what the expectations are for, for those projects to also provide, you know, a livable good wage, however we define that. I, I know between project labor agreements and others, there's a lot of legal precedent for how you talk about all this kind of stuff. But it, it seems to me that on federally funded jobs, you have to have Davis Bacon. But on locally funded jobs, you, you don't necessarily have to. And it's, it's, for, for major projects that we have an investment, I think it's worth a discussion among council at one of our workshops or work sessions sometime in, in the future. And I, I, I think it is a, it, it is something that the Blackbird people stressed with me today, that they, they like the fact that we're using union labor and it's one of the reasons that they think projects like this can be successful if the city ensures that there's going to be a high-quality workforce on these job sites. So, if you don't mind that, Christine, maybe we could come back. Just in, in closing, I, I think because of the competitive nature, we increased the size of the hotel by 40-some percent at minimum numbers. We accelerated the timeframe by almost 10 years, which is, which is significant. I think you've brought forward great plans that, that are going to really make downtown shine, so.
And I would just add, the Skywalk was another item that we brought forward.
Yeah. Yeah, brought, yeah, the Skywalk by another eight years or whatever. So, I feel good about it.
Can, can we just, in this, not only does it have to do with this one, but can we take a look at a policy of land sales that the city has? And it just seems like that, and I know the mayor and I've had this discussion, you know, if we're selling a piece of land that we're automatically, and, and we're not going to change that on this, but in the future, you know, it's a, it's a forgivable loan. They pay us 4 million, you get the 4 million back. So, I know when we decide we're moving the municipal service center phase two in the market district, we're going to have a lot of land there that the city's going to own. It's going to be very valuable. And, you know, I've expressed this to Matt in, in economic development, that I don't, I don't think it should be a given that we're going to just, well, if you want to buy that, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to tell you the purchase price, but then we're going to give you that money towards the project. I think we need to really take a good look at our policy and make sure that we're prepared for, for that type of development.
Absolutely. And it's, it's not actually a given.
Okay.
It has to be.
It just seems like we do it every time, so I don't know. Oh, it seems like a given, but if it's not a, if it's not a policy, then I guess we don't have to change it.
Yeah, in every instance, there's additional features. In this instance, it's density, sheer magnitude of the project.
So, I guess before we vote then, any concerns, questions? Have we covered?
Let's see it. I want to go see a movie there soon.
Yeah. My man Evan came to watch our debate here. Are you going to go see a movie downtown? All right.
Seven yes?
Congratulations to the whole Mandelbaum group. We appreciate your, your work on this over the last number of years and quite frankly, your commitment to Des Moines for decades and, and quite frankly, over a century. So, we look forward to being not only your supporters, but your partners moving forward and let's, let's make this happen. And I know your dad's looking at you pretty closely, so.
That's more pressure than we could be.
His pressure will probably be worse than ours. So, have fun with that and good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Item 48 on the 2017 ADA Sidewalk Ramp Program Contract 2 Resolution, Improving the Plan, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineers' Estimate, and Designating the Lowest Responsible Bider as Tyzak Concrete Inc., Steve J. Rutt, President, $595,790. Council Communication Number 17-333A is approving the contract and the bond and the permission to sublet. Anyone here to talk about this item? 48. Seeing none, could we have a motion? Close the hearing.
I'll move.
I know you don't like it, but.
Six yes, one no.
49. On the 1718 HMA Pavement Scarcification and Reservicing Resolution, Improving the Plan, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineers' Estimate, and Designating the Lowest Responsible Bider as OMG Midwest Inc., Doing Business as Des Moines Asphalt and Paving, Jeffrey A. Chapman, General Manager, $897,881.45. Council Communication Number 17-336A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Open the hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, let's close the hearing until we have a motion on item 49.
I'll move.
Seven yes?
Item 50 on the 2017 HMA Residential Paving Program Resolution, Improving the Plan, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineers' Estimate, Designating the Lowest Responsible Bider as Grimes Asphalt and Paving Corporation, Kurt Rasmussen, President, $726,608.40. Council Communication Number 17-334A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Open the hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing. Could we have a motion? Item 50.
I'll move 50 and 51A.
Coleman?
Seven yes?
Item 51 on the Birdland Marina Utility Improvements Resolution, Improving the Plan, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineers' Estimate, Designating the Lowest Responsible Bider as Mintern Inc., Clinton M. Rhodes, President, $132,890. Council Communication Number 17-338A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. We'll open the hearing on that item. Again, Birdland Marina Utility Improvements. Anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the hearing. Could we have a motion on item 51, 51A?
I'll make a motion to approve 51 and 51A. And I just want to talk about what a great addition this is going to be to that entire area. Bikers, walkers, boaters, everyone will benefit from it. So, thank you.
Are we stopping on the mayor's bike ride at Captain Roy's in the marina?
Are you riding?
I think I am, man.
I think I might, too.
All right.
All right.
Maybe not the old man.
Is Ben here? Ben, we've got some commitments here. All right. Item 52 on the Howe and Windsor Elementary School Pedestrian Bridge Repairs Resolution, Improving the Plan, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineers' Estimate, and Designating the Lowest Responsible Bider as Mintern Inc., Clinton M. Rhodes, President, Council Communication Number 17-335A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Is this getting both of these done?
Yes.
That's great.
All right.
Not so bad, huh?
I'll move 52, 52A.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. For the manager, since engineering's not here, will this improve the ADA at either or both of these walkways?
No, no.
No. No, it's essentially as built, but repaired.
Okay.
Do we have to have another reading or?
I've moved them all.
It says Windsor Elementary, but it connects to St. Teresa's. And Evan, you go to St. Teresa's, don't you?
You ever walk across that bridge, Evan?
Petrified, aren't you?
Just wanted to ask.
Don't ask him if any of these.
It's your, it's your safe route to, from the north side to the south side, so. There you go. Mrs. Hensley?
Six yes, one no.
All right.
That's it.
That brings us to the end of our hearings. Let's note that it's 6:05. And that actually brings us to the end of our agenda. Could we have a motion adjourned?
Move.
Home favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We sit adjourned. Thank you all for attending.